At this point the meeting is open for public discussion on agenda items only. It is open to the public for items listed on this agenda only. Any member of the public pushing the speed?
Motion to close the public portion.
The motion is second to close the public portion, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For approval in the packet are minutes from July 9th, 2024, and the motion is in order.
Second.
Move the second to approve the minutes of July 9th. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Not voting.
Motion carries. Correspondence, we have none. Planning director report.
Mr. Chairman. Just two quick items about, notes about items that will be coming before you tonight, or this afternoon, and next month as well. So, in just a few minutes, you'll be asked to listen to and take action on a requested amendment to the Water Quality Management Plan, specifically the sewer service area. You're roles to ensure that the sewer lines do not, are, well, they're consistent with local zoning, consistent with their county master plan, and they do not significantly encroach upon wetlands or threaten endangered species. These are state and county criteria and procedures, and so your role is important to uphold that. I'm paraphrasing, and I hope I didn't do too much damage to that overview, Nick. Nick is our expert, and he'll, we have the developer here that'll make a very brief presentation, and then Nick DiFaro will present his review of the proposal with recommendations. The second one is, I'm just pleased to announce that next month, Mike Dana Miller, hey, Mike, will be making a presentation on Mission Zero, and I think you'll find this really interesting to hear what we're doing, how we're working with partners to tackle the challenging tasks of reducing fatal and serious injury crashes on our highways and our roads. So, looking forward to that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion is in order to approve the report of the planning director.
So moved.
Moved it second to approve the planning director's report. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Old business, we have none. New business? Action item A, consideration of site-specific amendment, application to the lower. Middlesex County Water Quality Management Plan.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Nick DiFaro, principal planner for Resiliency for Middlesex County, and as Linda said, I have the responsibility of trying to manage the wastewater management plan, which is part of the Water Quality Management Plan that we, as a designated planning agency, have special rights to review and approve with DEP consent. The project that we are talking about today is Woodhaven Village, Section 2, Estates 2, and Section 3 in blocks 22001, actually 14, block 24001 dash lots, excuse me, and block 22,000 in Old Bridge on Woodhaven Boulevard, Texas Road and Old English Town Road. Okay, so Woodhaven Village's LLC is our applicant, submitted a site-specific amendment to formally reinstate portions of Woodhaven Village and approximately 1,450-acre planned unit development in Old Bridge Township into the future wastewater service area, known as the FWSA, of the Lower Raritan Middlesex County Water Quality Management Plan area within Old Bridge Township. The request involves 242 residential units of the approved project, which will remove from the FWSA, and it encompasses a total area of 56.56 acres and an anticipated effluent flow to our MCUA plant of 63,300 gallons per day, making this a major project. The 242 residential units involve scattered, you'll see some of this on the maps that are being presented today, involve scattered lots that, due to dispute on both wetlands encroachments and wetlands delineations between Army Corps and DEP, were removed from the planned area for sewer service. At the same time, actions were taken by the Old Bridge Municipal Utility Authority to actually install active sanitary sewer lines, which prompted the developer to develop some of these portions without them being in the sewer service area. So, a little bit of cart before a horse occur here. We have approvals in this application from Old Bridge Sewerage Authority to actually take the sewerage, which is the actual transfer of the effluent to the plant through their existing lines. That is one consent that has to be achieved and was achieved through this application. And we also have a letter from NUA, actually NUA, that does confirm that they have capacity and can accept that flow of 66,000 to 63,300 GTG. The plan was actually, this is a very old plan. It is a planned unit development and general development plan, and it's dated October 10th, 1989. So, we've seen a lot of this project come in in different sections with different types of approvals, and now we're trying to basically clean up what amounts to the rear of property lines of some of the proposed lots, and some very small sections in Estates 2, only I believe a total of seven lots, and then a major proposed lotting in Section 3, and minor in Section 2 as well. So, I'm going to allow Mr. Ives, who is the Atlantic Realty's representative, engineer, and preparer of this application, to go briefly through that. I must warn you, I just looked at the first image, and the request we made for today's meeting from Mr. Ives is to provide us with a map that shows the lotting, the wetland areas, and the sewer service area. And apparently, we received a map from him that layered without showing the items below very clearly on this map. You can see them a little better here. And then on the third map, I think you see the most accurate depiction of this section. And the blue area there is basically lotting that has been proposed but is not within the sewer service area. With a better, you can see here, the brown are actually constructed units. The upper portion shown to the northeast is subdivision of residential lots. The lower portion, I want to direct it south, is actually 40 units of apartments in two buildings as part of a larger apartment complex on that particular lot. All part of the general development plan and the figure, the planned unit development. For those of you who aren't familiar with this, a planned unit development and a general development plan gives the developer rights to a much longer period to complete the project based on the size of the project and the, and the conditions of destruction. So, we now have, we're pretty near the end of Woodhaven Village's request for additions to the SSA. And as I said, I'm going to now move this handover over to Mr. Ives, and then I can give you a very brief summary of my staff report.
Mr. Ives?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm William Ives. I'm with Woodhaven Village, Inc., product manager and engineer planner for Woodhaven Village, Inc. I had been so since the early 1990s. I'd like to make a few corrections. There was no wetland dispute. The wetlands were delineated by the Army Corps of Engineers back in 1994. We had an agreement, a consent with the New Jersey DEP when they adopted, they assumed jurisdiction, we say they did, I guess, somewhere in early 90s. And in 2007, 2008, DEP decided that they were not happy with the wetland delineation, so we did another field verified wetland delineation in 2009, 2008, 2009. So, the wetland lines you see on the plans are a resolution of a dispute that happened in 2008. In 2008, all of Woodhaven Village within the sewer service area. Part of the resolution of the wetland locations was a certain amount of field, Woodhaven was allowed. Woodhaven mitigated for that by giving money and land to the DEP and by restricting just about all of the remaining developable land to Woodhaven. So, the wetland line is something that DEP was happy with, and this was in 2009. Trying to dot the i's and cross the t's, there is a section of the administrative consent order, the amended administrative consent order. And the amended part is the field verified wetland lines by DEP. It says DEP will do all it can to keep Woodhaven slated for development, to portion slated for development within the sewer service area. It would do what's no good to have a consent order that said, "We're allowed to develop if they took us out of the sewer service area." So, those things go hand in hand. So, the first, that's the second correction I want to make, is that on Section 2, which you see up there, if you look at the TV monitors, the wetland line is a little bit better. This one's, I don't know, I don't think it's so good. But that one and this one are fine. You can also see that all of that area is outside of the wetland line. So, all of that is in, in an upland. It always was an upland, or the development there was permitted by DEP. The orange areas are constructed. They were constructed back when Woodhaven was still in the sewer service area, so the Old Bridge NUA did nothing wrong. They did not approve things they should not have approved. Likewise, the county approved those back at the time, and the county did nothing wrong. The county approved what should have been approved back then. So, those are the orange areas, and they are occupied, and they've been occupied for years. The blue area is Phase 6, that is fully approved through the township and the county and the NUA. That is outside of wetland areas, and it is, for some reason, in 2013, or 2013, be proposed sewer service area map drew that big, long, straight line there, and it took out portions of Woodhaven Village. I did not know where that line came from. We had wetland maps on file with DEP. DEP should have known that those areas shouldn't, should stay inside because they had a wetland line. And the regulations, the Water Quality Management regulations talk about wetlands and the species flood hazard areas, other environmentally sensitive areas, and those areas that you see in orange and blue are outside of those areas. So, those actually belong in the sewer service area. So, I don't know where the line came from. I can, I can guess, I can think that the line on the right is trying to mirror the counterline, but I don't know. So, this one, this Section 2 is strictly cleanup. And in fact, the blue area, all of those actually were ex-approvals, NUA approvals from DEP. And maybe this is a good time to reject here, but DEP recognizes that they should be in the sewer service area, and that this was an error and it needs a correction, and that's why I'm calling it a reinstatement, because these areas weren't in. DEP said they could not do it on their own. They had their procedure, and the procedure was an amended procedure, which is we're doing it the way DEP instructed us to do it. So, we're asking for those areas to be reinstated because two of them are occupied and one of them under construction, which they should have ex-approval already. I go to the next one, the previous one. The previous one. This is Estates 2. These are 20,000 square foot single family lots. There are 117. You can see that they are by and large, the entire project is inside sewer service area. Down at the bottom of, at the bottom of the page, you'll see some blue, and you'll see two areas in blue if you look real hard. Obvious one kind of on the right, and a slight one on the left. The obvious one on the right, there are two lots there. They are outside of current wells, because part of that was permitted to be filled under the AACO. It's not anyone else getting the permit. Once you get a permit, you should be allowed in the sewer service area. There is a sewer line in the cul-de-sac that serves those two lots. Just to the left, and in fact, with those two lots, the idea is to clean them up and to not try to cheat a house very close to the room. The person buying that house should either be in or be out, which is the same argument for the remaining areas, the two barely perceptible ones to the left of that one. And up at the top of the drawing, you'll see some blue there too. The reason for those is to clean up those lots so that the entirety of the lot is in the sewer service area, and that the buyer of those homes does not run into trouble with habitable lives in, habitable lives out, like a single-family house getting half in one zone, we've had it in another zone. So, that's it, that's a cleanup.
And Bill, if I may, board members, the, this flat, not the exact flat, is similar, is in your packet on tablet attachments, page 10 of the PDF. It's a little bit clear. You can't see from a distance. The green there kind of covers the lot lines, but you can see them on the tablet, the subdivision. Sorry.
We had, as a developer, the regulations being what they are, we had to do that. And there's white areas there that are not developed because they're undetectable. That's, that's the way it is. And on this one, there are six lots asked to be reinstated, actually six parts of lots. Flow's only coming from two of them because the other ones couldn't. The building in mode is entirely within the sewer service area, by chance. And we could have built a house there, but we did not want to leave the back end of the lot off because that's just not right there for people who are going there. I'm going to go to Section 3. Section 3 looks like it's, Section 3 is pretty uniform environmentally. It's, and on the side you can see it's half in, half out. Again, I don't know where they got that line from. But it does not, it does not match up with any of the wetland lines or anything else that I can find. In, in the yellow, those lots are all in the sewer service area already. And then the blue ones, which there are 165 lots or parts of lots, they are all outside of wetlands also. The blue area, you can see it looks like a long, looks like a long, thin run of houses, and that's because there is wetlands, a creek to the right, and there are wetlands to the left. So, that's an area in between two wetland complexes. And with a little bit of permitting and a lot of the fill, we were able to do, do that. And we've kept the wetland areas outside of those building lots. If you look at that heavier line, this, this is a different engineer than the other two drawings, but the wetland line here is a heavier line. And you'll see that there are some upland areas. There's a, that long road down the middle, going ultimately left to right, east to west, is Woodhaven Boulevard, or proposed Woodhaven Boulevard. And then the road, if you were to drive that Woodhaven Boulevard from the left to the right, and then go left at that intersection where the blue is, go to the first cul-de-sac, you'll see the line that's outside of the building lots. Those are all uplands too. We're not asking for those to be put in the sewer service area, but they're uplands.
The building, what color is the wetland line? I'm trying to follow you.
Our mountain is black. Our mountain is black. There's a blackish line.
It's dashed lines right here.
I'm trying to follow on my screen over here.
They're not, they're not going to show up on your screen because what you have in the screen are the older maps. We didn't get these until later.
I thought that was not crazy.
You could still be crazy.
But in summary, the development is outside of wetlands. It's outside of flood hazard area. It's outside of endangered species. It's outside of archery zones. It's developable, it's developable under DEP's regulations. So, we're asking for this to be reinstated. This has not been instructed yet. And I think, just two other quick things. The total of the units between all three of them is 211. There are 242 lots, tax lots involved. Some of them are proposed tax lots. Most of them is proposed tax lots because, for instance, in Section, in Estates 2. In Estates 2, that is one large landhold right now. We have listed it as all the proposed lots because we have not filed the final packet. But that's right now. It's block 24,001, lots 13 and 23. It's how it's on the map. But we haven't called it two lots. We've called it 106 proposed lots. We received endorsement letters from DEP, from the SS County Tunnels Authority, from the local Old Bridge, the municipal Tunnels Authority, and from Old Bridge Township. Any questions? That's all I have.
Nate? I know Mr. DiFaro has other comments, so let's get away from questions after they finish. Thank you for your presentation, sir. Mr. DiFaro, do you have a question?
I believe you have a copy of my staff report already in your, in your folder for this project, and I'm going to go through it briefly. And I think there was really no dispute between our programming and Mr. Ives' contentions on the Woodhaven project. The Woodhaven Village's project, I'm, this isn't in the report. The Woodhaven Village project, as I said, was initiated in the 1980s. At that time, Army Corps of Engineer was doing high-resolution area for wetland delineation, and they used that delineation officially for this project. DEP wasn't happy with that, and DEP also was out on the site, and I believe found many areas of encroachment as they began to prepare the site for construction. The AACO that Mr. Ives mentions, he only discusses DEP's requirements of that, of that AACO. Another requirement in the AACO is that Woodhaven Village provide $1,500,000 to the local Wetlands Mitigation Council, the state Wetlands Mitigation Council, and also try to obtain additional open space to mitigate what happened in the late 80s and early 90s. And this is all in the AACO, so we are bound by that. The delineation you see is, to my point of mind, it is not only a wetlands restriction, but as Linda mentioned, there are also concerns about environment endangered species habitats which cannot be placed in sewer service areas unless those environmental areas in, in, in their total are contiguous, we, more than 25 acres, less than 25 acres, excuse me. They don't be, they can be put into the SSA if those areas are less than 25 acres. When you look at the actual wetlands map, you will see many isolated wetlands, and you will see a lot of other wetlands that are certainly more than 25 acres if you look at the extent of those areas outside the project site. Those are all issues that are addressed in the AACO, and we cannot address those now. And we're basically, we have to be happy with the decisions that were made by that board boarder. So, I wanted to bring that up so that you understand it is not simply a DEP situation that created our, this meeting today. It has a lot to do with errors made on both sides, and I think quite honestly, some, some real consternation by the DEP about the kind of encroachments that did occur and that they are. So, so when we talk about the wetlands, the AACO also, AACO, excuse me, also has a wetlands areas delineation map and restoration areas, and that is where we find some of the encroachments that were made in that early process and that now we are accepting in the sewer service area and are requiring that mitigation of $1.5 million. And honestly, I forgot to mention, they also brought 400 acres in Jefferson Township of uplands to try and mitigate this wetland encroachment issue. So, that's a little bit more of what really went on in the past. Now, we're talking about today, and we have an issue where we simply have to find these smaller lots. I think, thank you, Linda, for pointing out. Page number 10 actually shows a lot in here, and you can see that, that there are very few lots there that are impacted, and they are only impacted partially. The state has the right to say what portion of a lot can be served by sewer, and can say the remainder cannot, and that's what happened in this instance. But now we have the AACO that says, well, this has to be placed in, and these are really de minimis areas for this particular area. So, this is something that is approvable, and while we are not bound by the AACO, the, there is actually an item in the AACO that specifically says that Woodhaven has to come to us for approvals for this SSA area. There's no doubt about that. So, we're here, and we are legally responsible to make a decision on this. My findings are that this has had supplemental initial and subsequent permissible approval for planned unit development and a general development plan. The project now needs all municipal zoning requirements for the zoning district. The Middlesex County Development Reunion has approved several sections of this request, and presently Estates Number 2 is under review by the, the Development Review Committee. The AACO addressed issues of natural habitat destruction, as I pointed out earlier, and significant disturbance of extensive wetlands and flood plains on site required the applicant to contribute $1.5 million to the Freshwater Wetlands Mitigation Council through the acquisition of appropriate lands within Old Bridge to the maximum extent permissible to mitigate the destruction of these critical environmental assets. And wetlands restoration plans are And Wetman's restoration plans are included in the AACO. The proposed development is 40 apartment units in three buildings and 202 single-family residential units. So I think, I don't believe those apartment units are actually lots. They are simply apartments within that development, but they are residential units and they do contribute to Santer's Sewer Club. The area of this, the accumulative area, the accumulated area of all the 142 units encompasses 56.56 acres, as I said before. We have 63,000, 300 gallons per day of anticipated adlink through OBM UA and MCUA sewage and sewage We've got a consent letter from MCUA and also from Old Bridge Municipal Utility Authority. And we also have a resolution confirming a zoning project approval and validating municipal support and consent for the SSA review from the township of Old Bridge. With all that, my staff recommendation is recommendation of endorsement of the 56.56 acre requested sewer service area expansion within the property placed within Lower Raritan, Middlesex County future wastewater service area intention upon the provision of all state required, well-required state, county, and municipal permitting and including any instrumentalities thereof. And with that, I, we need to make our decision whether to approve or to hold or whatever decision we want to make on this. But our recommendation is to approve and endorse.
Thank you, Mr. Tofaro.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I just have a quick clarifying question, not pertaining necessarily to endorsement, but in terms of presentation, it was stated this is outside the FHA flood hazard area? Is that, is this proposed project not, was there a DEP flood hazard verification?
My understanding is that there is no flood hazard, no flood hazard issue on this project. Any other questions for Mr. Tofaro or Principal Planner or the applicant represented? Thank you very much. The resolution is included in the packet. Motion's in order to accept staff recommendation for approval of Resolution 2024-08. The motion is in order.
Move to approve.
The move is second to approve or rather adopt Resolution 2024-08. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Development Review Committee report.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Katie Pennella. I'm a Principal Planner with the Office of Planning. I'm just going to briefly go over for you the August monthly development activity report as well as just do a quick summer recap for May, June, and July. Looking first at table one of the report, applications on the DRC monthly agenda. We had a pretty busy summer with 40 applications in May, 29 in June, 33 in July, and 31 in August. In August, you can see the breakdown of those 10-site plan applications, eight subdivisions with 13 extensions. Moving along to table two, development activity for approved or conditionally approved applications. You can see that the largest square footage by use was industrial for the months of May through August, which is consistent with what we see in warehouse development throughout the county. For August in particular, there was 784,000 square feet of industrial space approved, followed by 325,000 square feet of mixed-use commercial development and additional details for which are in table three below. You can see table three highlights some development activity for August. The first application you see there is Segney JVN Property in Old Bridge, which is a proposed warehouse on Route One, Jake Brown Road, Schollmeister Road, and Spring Hill Road, or Spring Hill Road is the county road in question here. Number two, Princeton Nurseries in South Brunswick and Plains Row proposes to redevelop the former Princeton Nursery site along Route One. This mixed-use development includes 325,000 square feet of commercial space, which is retail office, hotel, grocery store, and then 1,508 residential units, which are townhomes, garden apartments, and single-family homes. And then finally, item three is Wood Springs Suites Hotel in Woodbridge on West Kelly Street, which is near Route One, and it proposes the redevelopment of a former grocery store site as well as a new hotel with 124 rooms. And then just other applications of note during the summer months include the LIV, which is the Elks Lodge site on Livingston Avenue in New Brunswick. This application was conditionally approved and includes 33,400 square feet of commercial space and 407 residential units. And for those of you familiar with the site, the Elks Lodge building on New Street and Livingston Avenue, if you had any concerns about the fate of the Elks statue, it will be reinstalled near its current location on Livingston Avenue after the project is completed. Veridian Partners is a 471,000 square foot warehouse in Port Amboy's downtown gateway redevelopment area. It was conditionally approved. Site has frontage on county roads, Smith Street and Herbert Street, and it's adjacent to the Argen River. And then finally, in June, Nokia in New Brunswick was approved, which is on French Street, rather conditionally approved. It will have 41,600 square feet of research and development space, and it will be home to the Nokia Bell outside doors. And then lastly, table four shows our exempt site plan applications. There were three exempt site plans in August resulting in 10 multi-family units, 2,000 square feet of commercial space, and two mixed non-uses. Are there any question?
Any questions for Principal Planner in the report?
Thank you.
A motion's in order to accept Development Review Committee report. Move in second to accept the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Millses County also planning staff reports. Lori Sol.
Good afternoon. Lori Sol for Sustainability and Resiliency with an update regarding the NJDEP stormwater management rules at NJAC 7:8 that were updated last year to reflect the new DEP inland flood protection rules, which became effective July 17 of 2023. These updated stormwater rules require municipalities to update their stormwater control ordinances and stormwater management plans, if applicable, by July 18, 2024. And under the DEP rules, counties are responsible for reviewing the municipal ordinances and plans for compliance with the new state regulations. And in Middlesex County, the Office of Planning serves as the county's review agency for municipal stormwater control ordinances and stormwater management plans per the Board of County Commissioner Resolution number 04-1114. And so with the advice and input of the Lower Raritan, Middlesex County Water Resources Association, or the WRA, the Office of Planning can either approve, disapprove, or conditionally approve an ordinance's compliance with these DEP rules. And so over the summer, the Office of Planning reviewed and acted on 12 municipal stormwater ordinances that were submitted to the county with input from the WRA. And the Office of Planning issued approval letters to 11 of these municipalities, including Cranberry, Denellen, Highland Park, Jamesburg, Miltown, New Brunswick, North Brunswick, Old Bridge, Plainsboro, South Plainfield, and Woodbridge. And we also issued one conditional approval letter to Sagerville for some minor edits that were still required in their ordinance. And the Office of Planning will continue to review and act on these municipally adopted stormwater control ordinances and management plans with the advice and input of the county's WRA as they are submitted to our office. And that concludes the update today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sol? The motion's in order to accept the report. Some move. Move in second to accept the report. Supervising Planner, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Supervising Engineer, Michael Daniel.
Thank you. I'm Michael Daniel. I've got three items to brief the board on today. In August, the county submitted saved streets and roads for all, SSRA, grant applications to the U.S. Department of Transportation, the applications for a concept development study on Second Ultry Road in Edison and Woodbridge Townships, and to conduct five road safety audits on county's high injury network roadways. Locations of those to be determined if approved. County would provide 30% of the local cost through in-kind staffing sources. That's number one. Number two, project team for NJTPA road safety audits, job that we're currently underway, has selected five county corridors for the study this year. The corridors were selected from the frequently frequent severe injury and fatal crash incidents and in proximity to areas of potentially disadvantaged neighborhoods. Several of the highest ranked corridors that were considered were excluded from consideration based on recent or upcoming safety-focused efforts by county engineering or DPW. Thankfully, we're already doing a lot on our roadways. The exact locations of the corridors will be announced after the project team notifies all affected municipalities. And number three, in August, planning staff continued to go where the people are, to share and discuss current transportation planning projects and to solicit input as part of our new transportation outreach strategy. Planning staff facilitated conversations and information tables at fireworks in Luau in South River, at the Labor Day celebration in South Plainfield, and we're going to be tabling at Cranberry Day and other locations to be determined. At these events, staff invite children and families to participate in a build-your-street activity where participants learn about different traffic safety measures and then use that knowledge to design their own optimal version of a safe and complete street. Staff also engage with the attendees through the events to discuss active transportation planning projects and to answer questions about general transportation issues. The events have been an opportunity for us to engage with the public and to receive feedback about local concerns. That concludes my report. Any questions?
Questions for the Supervising Engineer? Mr. Chair?
Not a question, but just yesterday at the NJTPA meeting, they talked about the local safety action plans and how they're, you know, going to be working with the regional partners to implement one or help them implement one. And it was mentioned on Lydus County already has this in place, which helps us to apply for federal safe street funds. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, that will be, hopefully, we should hear in November about that application. Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion's in order to accept the report of the engineer. Move in second to accept the report. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now the report of our Supervising Planner, Myra Beck.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Director Williams, County Commissioner Kenny, and members of the planning board. I have been closely monitoring the state planning commission's release of the preliminary state plan. Once that gets released and is months late, it will trigger the launch of the cross-acceptance process. Our existing state plan is from 2001. We desperately need a new state plan, and we're hoping very much that the preliminary state plan is released in time for us to work on it before the governor leaves his position. But once the preliminary state plan is released, the county is poised to become the designated quote-unquote negotiating entity. And in this role, we work with all of our 25 municipalities and the Office of Planning Advocacy, which is the state agency that releases the state plan. This will be intensive work on our part because we need to interface with our towns and help them to identify their local plans, review those local plans, and compare them to the preliminary state plan for consistency, as well as document on our side whether county plans are in keeping with policy goals of the preliminary state plan. That's number one. Number two, we have to go through another very formal exercise of having all the towns review their land use maps against the state plan policy map and identify areas that are inconsistent. Then we'll take all of that information from the municipalities, and it's our job to consolidate it as well as add our comments. That is where our land use planning maps aren't consistent with the existing state plan map and put it into a report that will get sent to the state, the Office of Planning Advocacy, and then we'll go through a negotiation period with them. So we'll keep you posted on where this process stands. I've also started the process of compiling information on affordable housing obligations for each municipality. This requires in-depth research and analysis, namely reviewing the fair share plans and the housing elements for three rounds of affordable housing in 25 municipalities. The fourth round will begin in March. This will be a time-intensive initiative. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much for your report. Motion is in order to accept the report by the Supervising Planner. Move in second to accept the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, last minute additions to the agenda. First, I'd like to welcome Dr. Joe Vinden to the planning board.
Thank you so much.
I'd also like to officially appoint Michael Kobazowski to the Development Review Committee, filling the vacancy left by Ronnie Gober. And at this point, the meeting is open to members of the public to comment on any item. Any member of the public wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Board members. Charlie Bradenville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Continue to be concerned about traffic safety and the high number of fatal crashes we've had in Middlesex County. I believe we're still leading the state with 38 fatal crashes, 42 deaths on our roadways. And I understand, you know, the goal vision zero is to get to zero. We have not had a month this year when we had zero fatal crashes. And I have noticed some trends in the crashes. Can't pretend to have the data that the county has and the analysis capacity that the county has, but sure seems like Route One and Route 130 are two of the deadliest roads in the state. And I, you know, brought this up basically to anybody who will listen, but I wanted to ask if perhaps the elected officials here or anybody else in the counties had any kind of dialogue with state leaders, either legislators or the governor, to do something about Route One and Route 130? Can anybody tell me if that's happened or if you're open to doing that? I think that would be a good step.
Thank you, Mr. Bradenville. Mr. Bradenville, it's not the first or second time you've raised the topic here at our meeting. Is there a specific remedy that you're seeking?
Good question. So the one thing that I'm concerned about is, you know, there is a pending plan for the Goodkind Bridge connecting to Brunswick and Edison, Route One north. And that plan, with the blessing of the NJDOT, would be to add a lane of traffic, the traffic, car traffic. And I don't And I don't know if there's any accommodations for pedestrians or cyclists, but given all that we know about transportation safety and the problem with that specific highway, Route 1, we did have a death on that exact stretch of highway this year. And yeah, I'm concerned that folks are moving ahead with this plan for the Goodkind Bridge. And maybe the county has some thoughts on it. I don't know if this is something the county agrees with, but if we're going to rebuild a massive bridge connecting two of our most important municipalities, I would hope we would build it to moderate standards with accommodations for pedestrians and cyclists instead of just trying to cram as many cars as possible into Route 1. That's my take on it. And I'm just curious if anybody on the board had an opinion or if you knew about this proposal. And so I didn't exactly answer your question there because I don't know what the answer is, but I am concerned about what I am seeing down. But that was the meeting.
If I hear you correctly, it seems to be your concerns for pedestrians and cyclists, particularly on the Goodkind Bridge and any proposed renovations. We're almost at time. Do any members of the board have a comment for Mr. Cradville?
I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a time limit, but I did want to also ask about roundtables. Are there any roundtables scheduled?
Mr. Chairman, I can respond next. Though we don't have any roundtables scheduled right now, but I could, the question about the Vision Zero, I can't, I don't, we don't have an opinion here on the Goodkind Bridge, but I will say that we are reaching out to DOT offices, prosecutor's office, and local traffic safety teams to continue our discussions about Vision Zero. We've talked about this before. It takes a long time. A lot of it is data collection, it's data analysis. It's looking at clusters of traffic crash sites. And you know, we have a powerful strategic approach to it. Please come next month because Mike's going to give you a presentation on it.
He'll be here.
It'll be here and we'll give you the latest rates.
I'll do my best to be here. I just want to hand this to you and you can pass it on to the board members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cradville. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? All she opposed, all of course. Second, it's been moved in second to close the public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes. Prior to a German, I just want to recognize while she's not here, the service of Ronnie Gomer. Ms. Gomer came on planning board at the same time as myself a little over seven years ago. Faithfully served, cheerfully served, always had a positive attitude, friendly disposition. It was always a pleasure to work with and be around. The work you all do here as volunteers and as professionals is important. It makes a difference and it's appreciated. And I wish Ronnie Gomer well on the way. Final item is German. And a motion is in order.
Chair, may I comment?
Sure.
I just want to quickly thank Julio and Katie for doing the E-plan demo, the demonstration from the applications and the website as a whole. So I just want to make sure you guys can take the time out to number one, schedule the demos and then actually go through the demos with just to see what is being submitted and how it is being submitted. So I assume you can actually, huh?
Thank you. I believe we have a motion to second for a German. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand in German.